It's building pretty significantly, just FYI.
Fifteen seconds. Good evening and welcome to the Pullman City Council meeting, virtual city council meeting tonight. Everyone is sheltered in place like we're supposed to and supporting the governor's measure. Just a couple of days ago, I was on a conference call with the US Conference of Mayors. And I was hearing from some mayors that their governors were late in getting the shelter in place. And they were actually seeing huge numbers that they said they shouldn't have seen had everyone sheltered in place. So we're very grateful for the console sitting at their homes tonight as we start this out. And this is the Tuesday, March 31st edition, the one that's had an earthquake today and a tornado in Pasco. And now we're virtual. So with that, Dee, would you please take role?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Records.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Councilmember Weller. Councilmember Wright.
Here.
We heard that Nathan may be having some technical issues tonight. Do I hear a motion to excuse him in case he doesn't get back on?
So moved.
Second.
Second, move in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, with that, we're going to start much like we did a couple of weeks ago with reports from our city staff on some of the things that we're doing right now during this COVID-19. But we're also fortunate to have Troy Henderson, the Whitman County Public Health Director on the line with us. And Troy, would you sort of give us an update? I know that we've heard that you've got at least more test kits than you've had the last time. So please give us an update.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson, and thanks for having me. Yeah, we have gotten a few hundred more test kits. And so that's improved our ability to test folks in Whitman County. We also received a small shipment of PPE, which we've been able to share some of that with both of our hospitals and some first responders. We have had eight positive tests to date. The first was a week ago last Sunday, so we're averaging just right at one a day. We have increased testing over the last eight days. And so it's, it's still a really small sample size, but it's a positive thing that as we've increased testing, we've stayed pretty consistent with the numbers. I would agree with your assessment that the governor's shelter in place order that was put in place early for us here on the east side, because we have not seen many cases. And of course, early as a state compared to other states in the country has really helped us. And there was some national reporting today that showed Washington State's case numbers. And our curve is considerably flatter than everyone else's. And then, of course, flat curves are really in vogue these days.
Anything else? Any questions of Troy that council will have here tonight? Brandon, will I see your hand up?
Yeah, yeah. Hey, Troy, thank you for joining us. I don't, I don't see Troy on the line, actually, so.
I think we lost him.
Okay. I'll hold, I'll hold the question in case Troy comes back. Yeah.
I thought he was there just by phone.
He was, and then it dropped off of the participation side.
Okay. Well, since we don't have him, we'll continue to move on. And I'm going to turn it over next to Adam. I know all the different department heads have been checking in. We've had a number of things. If you take a look at the homepage on our city website, we've got video chats up there. We've got a number of different presentations. We're having updates quite frequently. And so I thought we'd give the council and our public little update what we've been doing. So Adam.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Mike Urban will help run the slideshow here, so you'll see the shared screen. A lot of the, the slides will look similar to the last council meeting, but the information will be as, as up to date as we can be. I'd say right now, the, the terms that would describe our situation are fluid, unknown, rapidly evolving, and, and pretty unprecedented. And then you throw in the mix today, having the, the earthquake, the hail, the snow. It's just, you know, it's been a week. And it's Tuesday. Next slide, please. So on slide two, you'll see the partners that we, that we've been working with. From the federal side, we've been following along with the separate relief packages that have been coming out of Congress and from the president's office. We're very much paying attention to what FEMA is doing so that we're reimbursed for a lot of what we're, what we're going through. Of course, there's the social distancing guidelines that have been extended through the month of April. From the state side, we're, we're relying on our chiefs to really stay in touch with the, the state level EOC. We've got the governor's issued stay home, stay healthy, which currently is set to expire on April 6th. However, in a press conference that the, the governor had a few days ago with members of AWC, it sounded to me like it's, it's likely to be extended a little further out. And then, of course, we've had the, the school that's been out for, for a while now and, and set to resume on in April. And as we just heard, there's the, the eight cases so far that have been documented in our county. Slide, please.
And, and I apologize, I got dropped for a second. Was, was there any questions for me?
Mayor, you're muted.
Now I got the button. Brandon had a question for you, Troy. And we might have other council members that may have questions.
Yeah, Troy, I'm glad you were able to join back in. I'm actually looking at the announcement today about Whitman County Health explaining that they're not announcing where local coronavirus patients live, which I, I understand the reasoning behind that. I also know that a lot of counties are releasing certain things such as zip code or other things. I know our first responders, I saw some of them had posts on here, and they, they, of course, have concerns. So I, I wanted to get a little clarity on that. Maybe specifically mention, if you could, the rationale behind that. And, and why, why are we doing it differently than what seemingly is, are these other counties?
Of course, some of the other counties that are doing zip code information and further details are significantly larger counties. And so in Whitman County, we have some very small towns. And so there is a concern that if you release data on a community of, you know, 70 or 80 folks, that people in the community will know who it is that was sick and will either rightfully or wrongfully put two plus two together and maybe think they know the identity of these folks. And so there's some concerns about privacy for folks who test positive that may be unique to Whitman County because of the size of some of our towns, definitely different than the experience in King County. And then in regards to first responders, my concern and also with the towns is our testing has been so limited that folks should not rely on the fact that there has been a positive person in a community or not been a positive person in a community to suggest whether or not COVID-19 is active in the community. We've done so little testing that the prudent measure for folks in communities is to, is to go about their daily life as if it is in their community, because it probably is. And for first responders responding on a call, they should respond on calls as if the folks that they're dealing with on the call have COVID-19, because they very well might be. Whether or not they've tested positive or not, wouldn't greatly impact that, because we've done so little testing. I will tell you, I was on a meeting today with local public health officials throughout the state and the vast majority of other local public health officials agreed with me as far as being reluctant to provide kind of a list of first responders of who tested positive, because we don't want to get a false impression of who may or may not be infectious. I do support Whitcom asking some basic questions to screen callers as they do for other things prior to putting in a call. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other from a council that had a question of Troy?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I've had my hand up there. I don't know who's watching or not watching for hands up to ask questions, but we need to pay attention to that.
We are watching that. Plus, you also have a chat line, too, that you can do.
I'd like to just get a little clarification. And I think we need to use the terms properly as we're talking here. The order in the state of Washington is a stay home, stay healthy order. It's not a shelter in place order. Is that correct? Troy, you there?
Yeah, I am here. I'm, I'm not an expert on the, the wording of the governor's orders. That's how I interpret it, though.
Okay, I just, I think that there is a difference between the two. And Troy, I guess this isn't necessarily for you. I tried to get in on the conversation earlier. But I think that we really need to use the wording properly as we continue on from now forward and use what either the governor has got us set on or decide that we're going to change it, then we need to change it. But it is a stay home, stay healthy proclamation, not a shelter in place. And there could be a difference between the two. Just a little bit of information I'd like to be considered.
Yeah, I agree with you that there, there is a difference. With that being said, folks need to minimize as much as possible their interactions with other folks.
Yeah, because if I understand it properly, stay at home, you can still go out. Shelter in place, you're really not supposed to.
I believe you're correct. And, and obviously with the stay at home, there's some exceptions with going to getting groceries. And then obviously, you know, taking a walk around the block when the weather's nice, unlike today. There's absolutely nothing wrong with that, just using good common sense and, and good social distancing.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much, Troy. I just want to make sure that our citizens understand what the orders are out there.
Any other council members with a question for Troy?
Yeah, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Troy, have you, do you anticipate or have you heard anything from the state side about the possibility of getting any of the, the quicker testing kits? The, some of the, the things that have been recently approved for, for a quicker turnaround on testing?
We did discuss that in a meeting today, and the discussion revolved around the fact that Department of Health had said something that the local health jurisdictions weren't clear on. And so we had provided feedback to our Department of Health representation who was on a meeting today that we would like some clarification. I, I will tell you that most of us are hopeful that we would get it, but we're, we're, we're going to wait and see. Testing has been a moving target for some time. I'm not the only local health jurisdiction director who has been frustrated with the lack of testing. In fact, it, that's 100% across the board. And as capacities come online within the United States, a lot of times it seems as though they take a little longer than they may, should have, or, or we were promised that they were. And then there seems to be, you know, some competition between states and areas when there are limited resources. So I think, you know, getting those supplies distributed equitably across the United States is still a challenge.
Thank you. That was one, one thing the governor mentioned in his briefing to city and county leaders on Sunday was that he hates seeing that governors compete against governors for getting supplies and hoping that that can go away. Any other questions of Troy? If not, we'll just go back. Thank you, Troy, very much for being with us and, and giving us an update. We appreciate it very much, and thank you for all the work you're doing.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work that the city of Pullman and first responders and everyone else is doing down the front line.
So Adam will go back to you, and the rest of us can be on mute.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We're on the third slide. There we go. WSU, the information that we have from them is that they've been taking steps to encourage students to stay home. We have estimates that about 10% of the students have returned back to the dorms. The unofficial estimate from basically windshield surveys has been that about 25% of the students have returned to Pullman. There had been one day following spring break where it seemed like there was a big influx of students coming back. We, we are guessing that many of them were coming and grabbing things and, and going back home during that time. Online commencement has been scheduled for, for May 9th. Live commencement's rescheduled for August 8th. And of course, we stay in touch with President Schultz in his office to help get updates as quickly as we can. Next slide, please. From the city of Pullman side, you'll see on our, our main city webpage that we've got an alerts and updates link, as well as a big red bar across the top of the page that is there to direct you to pages that have information about COVID-19 and, and the response that the city's been providing. Their daily emergency management briefings from our, our emergency management team at the city. Department heads have provided essential personnel lists weeks before the governor's proclamation even. I, I really think we did a good job of, of trying to get ahead of this as quickly as we could. We have really been good about deploying laptops and surfaces for employees to work from home. We culled through the budget really rapidly to get an idea of what we didn't have to spend money on right away. And, and really, the, the positive of that meeting was that we kind of set the tone with the department heads about what was, what was the, the need as far as holding back expenditures right now while we kind of get through, through this time and what we're, what we're trying to sort out, especially as we figure out what is going on on the, the revenue side of the, the budget. Other things that we've been dealing with is trying to be really flexible with staff. We've got a lot of people who have, who have kids and being flexible with their schedules, making sure that, that we're understanding of schools being closed, daycare closures. We really impress upon our staff to practice social distancing. We've limited as best we can our, our city employees at our, at our facilities. And, and again, encouraged remote work. And then we've had things like this, our, our second YouTube live meeting. So we're, we're trying to stay ahead of things as best we can and use the technology that we, that we have. On the next slide, we've got some of the ways that we've been informing the public. We've got our city's website that's been a, a great asset to have this new, new site. It's much more user friendly, and we can get information on it much more rapidly. We've had some great social media posts that have gone out talking about how we can educate people and, and make sure that everyone's aware of what's happening. We did start finally doing some, some video for the first time ever, making sure that we're trying to put out both useful information and, and encouraging information to make sure that people know that we, that, that we're here and that we, we're going through the same thing they're going through. And there's a lot of uncertainty, but we're trying to put out the best information we can. And then we've had a lot of social media interaction from council members, too, that have been helping get the word out. Really, really appreciate your, your support in, in helping get the, the messages out to the constituents, our residents. It's, I think, really helpful to try and get the word out on, on multiple fronts. And we appreciate everything you're, you're doing to help us there. So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Heston to discuss what's going on with the fire department.
Thanks, Adam. And thank you, Council. So I want to start off with station accessibility. So we've closed our stations to the public, probably similar to other departments in the city. All deliveries are being delivered in the foyer, so we're not making any personal contact with that. Anybody that's off duty is not allowed back in the station, only for business only and/or family members. So none of those folks are allowed back in our station at this time. As far as postponed events, all events and public interactions, we postponed at this time. No more ride-alongs are postponed as well. First aid CPR classes are in those areas. We're down to minimal inspections, doing plan reviews, whatever we can do to keep the businesses going. So our people are taking care of those kind of things. As far as remote work assignments, we have Vicky working from home. Chris and Tony are working from home, but they're available to do inspections, plan reviews as needed. Brendan's at our office up by Whitcom, continuing to do ambulance billing to bring in that revenue. The chiefs are still working for now, but that may change as we have more people that are out. And then we have our workstations all spread out on the station, so making sure we're maintaining a social distance at all times. As far as cleaning and decontamination procedures, obviously, you can imagine by our CDC standards, we're doing daily cleaning in the station as needed, sometimes more. And special cleaning of the vehicles, equipment, and personnel as needed. And sterilizer unit, we've ordered one of those, should be here probably within a month or so. So there's a lot of backorder for a lot of items, as you can imagine. As far as decon, we've created some go bags for individuals. So if somebody does get a potential exposure, they can come into the station and we could get them into the shower and get them cleaned up and get them where they need to go. As far as training, we've implemented social distancing with that, using our online video for our training. We're going to continue with our reserve class doing online stuff, because we get those folks trained to a minimal level. We may need those in the future here pretty quick if a lot of our folks get put in quarantine. And then just got word that the National, or the Washington Fire Academy, we have two folks over there. They're going to be done at the end of this week. They're going to stop two weeks early, and then those folks are going to come home. So we'll get those folks back. There's two of them, and we'll do some online, we'll do some daytime training for them for a while and then get them on shift. So the parts that they're missing, we can make up for that in-house as we go. As far as emergency response, we're sending limited crews into the workplace. When we, when we respond, we're sending a scout out. We'll do a kind of a doorway survey. The other crews will kind of hang back outside as needed, just in case we need them. And then dispatch is asking key questions, like if you have a fever, if you've been out of the country for a while. And that helps us nail our, our first responders, both fire and police. And if we're going to do a transport, we have minimal people in the back of the ambulance, and we're not taking any riders, family members, those folks are not going to be allowed in the back of the ambulance as far as our emergency response. We're starting to see quite a few more calls in the last week or so. People, patients that are sick, potential ones tested for the COVID virus. But as you heard from Troy, there's only eight confirmed in Whitman County total. I have no idea where those are. We're not given that information. Some of the protection levels we're doing, I mean, right now, we bumped our protection level up to a level two, which is goggles versus glasses and masks and 95 masks, gloves. And that's our, what we're going to use for a standard to respond to all medical calls, because we've had a couple that went on the patients, a fall or a seizure, and they turn around and tell us, oh, by the way, we've been exposed or potentially exposed or the hospital calls us after the fact. So that's where a lot of personnel on the west side have been getting exposed is by those kinds of calls. So for those reasons, we've bumped, just bumped up to that next level, just to protect us, ourselves on all calls. We've got the front of the ambulance has a little hole to the front driver, so we've got that all walled off with plastic to protect the driver. As far as N95 masks, we have an adequate level right now. But if this thing takes off, then we'll be using our levels pretty quick. We did get one arrival of supply from the emergency management Whitman County, and there's more to come if we need. But right now, we're comfortable with the levels that we have of our personal protective equipment. As far as the potential exposures, if somebody has a potential exposure, that would be if they're not wearing their protective gear or a failure in the, in the protective gear, then we work with medical control at the hospital, which is for the whole county. And then confirm that with DOH, working with labor, of course. And then if they're potentially exposed, then we would put that firefighter into quarantine for up to 14 days. And sometimes it's at home. Sometimes it would not be at home if they have some high-risk family members that medical control recommends that they not go home. And then if they came, when they came out of quarantine or isolation, then we also worked with medical control and Department of Health Whitman County with Troy to confirm all that. So they're making those kinds of decisions for us. Far as safety and staff levels, we now, we're looking to doing temperature checks for folks when they come to the station. So if we get a lot more individuals sick in the community, community spread, or some more of our members get, become affected, we're, soon as we get the equipment in, we're going to do temperature checks. So before you come in the station, so if you're over 100, then you will not be allowed on the station. You'd be sent home until that clears. And we're working with PD on a similar thing as well. We're looking to kind of increase staffing levels, make sure everybody's working in pairs. So instead of sending three people, we're only sending two, especially when we're going on calls to Palouse, for example. Those are things we're looking at doing. And then we're also working on contingency plans right now for staffing. What's going to happen? We have a, a bunch of people out. How are we going to manage that? So we're working on that right now. So one of the things Troy talked earlier about releasing information, and I think we're not getting what we need is first responders. So I would like to see us as first responders, and it's well within our legal rights to get that. Troy just isn't releasing it at the moment, but we need to know where these patients are and who they are. And then we could flag, put that information out with them. And then as a first responders, both police and fire respond, they would have that information and be able to protect themselves. So I think it's a, it's critical to our operations that we know where these people are at this time. And I'm seeing other areas and communities doing that as well, so not all, but some. And I think it's well within our right to get that. So actually, I would ask our US City Council to reach out to your counterparts to help assist in that if you can. So, and I'm happy to talk more about that offline. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions? We did send the note off to Troy today and also included the material that Mike gave me from the Health and Human Services that said that police and fire should have that information or could have it.
That's correct. It's kind of like the Ryan White Act back when HIV was a big thing. That's kind of where that comes from. So we have a right to know where these patients are. So in case we go, come across them again to protect ourselves, because this thing could spread, and we could wipe out a whole bunch of our people pretty quick.
Yeah, Chief, thank you. I know that, that, that is why I brought that up with Troy. And I, you know, I respectfully disagree, even though I do understand his, his opinion on that. So, you know, I, I would stand with you, whatever, whatever our city's fire department feels like it, it needs. Did you, did you, did you say you're working from, from your office, or are you working from home?
All the chiefs are working from our offices, so we're still actively going into work every day. There's just so many things going on that it's so hard to react from home at the moment.
And Brandon, it's just like some things that we're dealing with AWC. If you have some HIPAA material, you can't take that out of your place, and you can't take it home. And same thing like with Karen Sires, our HR director, there's material that has to stay at City Hall. So she was in there working yesterday, I know. And so they're, they're, they're rotating that a little bit.
Mayor, I do want to add one more thing. Chief Lamro is, he's kind of our go-to person with Health and Safety Office. So he's coordinating any quarantine issues that would need to be happening with first responders for working with Community Action Center as well. So he's also keeping track of all the finances and receipts for the, we can be potentially reimbursed for after this is all over. So he's, so if somebody goes into quarantine, for example, and we have to feed them and take care of the laundry, all that stuff is going to be reimbursed, so he's controlling all that. And he's been working with all the other city department heads as the go-to to coordinate all that and have that notebook ready to go once this is all over. To coordinate all that and have that notebook ready to go once this is all over. He's done a great job for that, I appreciate that.
Any other questions of Chief Heston? If not, Adam?
Sure, thank you. Next few slides are going to be for Chief Jenkins.
All right, thank you, Adam. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this just gives you an idea of the difference between this March and last March, March of last year. Just showing our top ten calls for service. We didn't really see decline in calls for service until this past week, like I was, I would expect to see. But, but, but we do have less calls for service at the moment. But we still are pretty active and busy. The word that we got from Washington State University is they're hearing that perhaps this coming mom's weekend, which mom's weekend would have been this coming weekend. Perhaps will be a time that more people will, will pack some things up and go back home and leave Pullman, so. We'll see what happens there, but so far our calls are down just a little bit. Next slide, Mike. So internally, we, right now, we have seven staff members that are working from home, including myself. We're looking to add a couple of more that we think we can work from home at least a few days a week. Just trying to limit that, the contact between different staff, staff members and. Reduce the possibility that someone will get a lot of other people infected. We switch up our patrol briefings, our swing, day, day shift and swing shift overlap. As well as our swing shift and graveyard shifts overlap, and there used to be a lot of interaction, which was a good thing, but we're now. Asking them not to have that interaction and to stay separated for the same reason that we don't want. One person infecting, you know, potentially two shifts of people, so. We're working on our social distancing with internally as well as externally. We also are, we have some contingency plans already put together, should we have some staff lost to illness. We will revise some scheduling, still maintain the ability to provide law enforcement services in Pullman. As you know, we suspended our in-person business services at the police front desk. We've instructed all of our staff to adhere to social distancing. Of course, at our front counter, we have a relatively new, which was a safety. Piece of equipment, which was the bullet resistant glass that we recently had put in at the front counter. Now serves as a great way to shield our staff from the public, the public that does come in still. And that we either will refer to call Whitcom or come to meet an officer and that type of thing, so we can still conduct some business. At the front counter. But our staff, they're all, all of our front record staff are instructed to utilize gloves when handling any type of. Documents or mail that, that we get from the public. Our police facility is pretty much locked down, it's restricted only to police employees other than the front lobby. And Pullman City employees as needed. No station tours, no ride-alongs, no meetings involving non-city staff. You, we did have Department of Corrections, me, meeting clients in a room that we provided at the police department. We've since closed that down, but they have changed their procedures anyway, so they didn't have a need for that room as well. Our, all of our record staff, twice each, each shift, they do a full decontamination throughout our police facility. And then each employee in the police department does a full decontamination of their work area as well. So we are putting a lot of effort into that. Our calls for service, we are trying to limit close contact with the public. If we can handle something over the telephone, we will do that. But if someone insists on the presence of an officer or it's a type of call that we do need an officer there, obviously we will go. We will also avoid trying to go inside of a residence or an office if we can avoid it. But again, obviously there's times in a law enforcement setting that we're just going to have to go in and do what we need to do, but. Our staff is making a concerted effort just to try to avoid any unnecessary contact or risk exposure. We're particularly on medical calls, the calls that we do go on. Unless there is some life-saving measures that are needed immediately, our officers are standing by to assist fire if they need any help. But we're trying to limit our exposure on those calls as well. Our staff has personal protective equipment issued to them, we have. We have a fairly good supply that I think will last us for a while, so we're in good shape there. We are still making arrests, we're trying to be prudent and judicious about it. And trying to use good judgment, but there are times that we just have to make arrests and so that we have that physical contact. We're doing screening of people that we, that we do come into physical contact with to determine if there was a potential exposure. And so our staff. We are passing that information along, we're working with Mike's crew, EMTs and also with the hospital. Providing information to people that, that maybe are, that we suspect maybe have COVID nineteen. So that we can keep an eye on our staff. We've discontinued some non-essential services, services in compliance with the governor's proclamation. So we have suspended activities such as timed parking enforcement downtown and in other areas. Well, we will do parking enforcement that has some type of safety nexus to it. Like fire lane, fire hydrant and, and safety-related parking violations, and then animal, animal control. We are still doing that with our code enforcement, but some of those non-essential services are, have been discontinued. Or they've been suspended. As Adam mentioned previously about our budget, we currently are only expending for essential operational necessities. And putting a hold on all other expenses. We were in the process of recruitment for police officer positions and a police commander position. Those have all been put on hold. They've been suspended until we're, we're through this current crisis, and so we're carrying those vacancies for now. All the training that our officers have been scheduled to attend, that were in-person classes have all been canceled. A few have been able to be moved online, but most of them have not, and this has impacted probably. I would say forty or fifty training classes already. So it's had a significant impact on training. We're trying to do as much as we can as far as finding training that's online. And, and do as much as we can that way and also doing some in-house things, but that took a big hit. We did have an officer that was one week into the police academy, the police academy closed. For all of their classes, for basic recruits and all of their advanced officer training. I just was notified today that they're extending that closure for at least another four weeks. So they did have some classes that were in progress that were due to graduate. Within a week or two of when it closed, they've been working with those recruits. To finish up their coursework and there they were able to graduate and move on to their agencies for in-house training. So our recruit is now back with us, we're going to have him do, they're actually, the academy's providing him some homework to do. And we're providing him also some work that is more in the area of orientation to prepare for the academy and, and. Some initial, basic level police officer training. We have another officer that we hired that was going to be starting the academy in another week. And obviously he's not going to do that, and so we're going to do the same thing with him, so it'll give us a little bit more time with them to. To prepare them for the police academy and also provide some initial work upfront. As the mayor mentioned and Adam mentioned, we're attending a lot of briefings, we do a daily briefing every morning. With our city man, our city emergency management team to get up to speed on what's going on. There is a daily Whitman County Emergency Operations and Public Health briefing that I attend. There's a twice-a-week Washington State University EOC briefing. There are state Department of Health briefings, the governor has held a couple of briefings and the White House has held a couple of briefings. And so those have been very informative and helpful and. So we were doing a lot of information sharing as well. For example, with our businesses, our chamber and the downtown Pullman Association, along with our economic development manager, Jennifer Hackman. Sharing information that we find out that can benefit the businesses and help them really start the recovery already. I think the messaging has already been discussed as far as the webpages that have been created. We're doing a lot of social media, we've, there are a lot of people that. We've added as followers and new likes on both the city and the police department Facebook page. As well as our Twitter accounts, and there's some information that you can see there, where, excuse me, we've seen, seen some increases and. And our reach in both Facebook and Twitter is, is pretty large, so. It's good that we have those communication tools in place because I think the public is really depending on those to get. Updated information along with our website. And I'll also, I'll concur about what Chief Heston had to say about the getting COVID nineteen information from the Department of Public Health. I think it's a matter of safety and health for our staff to have that information, and so I would support. Working with the county to try to get that information from them, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Chief? I have one right away, when you mentioned about that forty to fifty training sessions are not going to be held. What about the certifications? Every one of the certifications have a certain expiration date. Has the governor extended that or postponed the certification expiration dates because of that certification, lack of training?
So a lot of those, the certifications are actually administrative run by the Criminal Justice Training Commission, so. They can administratively suspend the requirement for those, and that, one just came out today for. I think it was, it's called access training for getting confidential. Information on our, on our network through the state, and we have to have a certification for that. And so the people that were just getting out of the academy had not had that yet, and they're not having those classes, and so. They do have a temporary measure in place that will allow them to do the work that they need to do without having that certification. So the, it's being addressed at the Criminal Justice Training Commission level.
And you are finding they're responsive, because I know that there have been some other questions of the governor's staff as far as. What's essential businesses, things like that, so I just want to make sure law enforcement and fire is protected that way. Dan Ruckert, you got your hand up, I see that.
And us too, Mayor.
Yeah, Chief, I was wondering if you have been following some of the, some of the trends in other jurisdictions. Where they see a drop in property crimes, but also a corresponding increase in domestic violence and. Have we been thinking about, you know, you, you said that there, we haven't seen other than the last week or so a, a change. But would you anticipate any change in protocol or any additional training that might, might be helpful for officers if we start to see that trend?
Yeah, no, I mean, we, you know, actually our volume of domestic violent calls is, I would say relatively high. Anyway, and so our officers are pretty well versed in handling those types of calls. I have seen. Other jurisdictions that have seen that increase, in fact, last night I'm on the ATVB board, and that was a subject of discussion of our board. Because of that concern, and so, yeah, it's something that we're going to keep an eye on and. And, you know, it's one thing that I think would be helpful for us to continue to, to watch and see what other org, agencies are doing. To address those, the situations like that, but I think we're, we're in a good position to, to handle what we're getting right now.
Anne?
Thank you, Chief. Well, I'd like to say that I appreciate all of the information that is coming out from the city, from all the different departments. But I particularly appreciate police and fire because you two, those two agencies are the most public-facing. And both of your Facebook and social media, all of your social media presence has. People are accustomed to it and they interact with you regularly, and I very much appreciated police and fire. Being proactive with your posts and, and sharing of information, because I think a lot of people look to. The city, but maybe they don't quite know where to look, but they always know police and fire, you know, are places they can go to, so just wanted to say thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks for that, and Darby is, is a rock star.
I'm not hearing any audio right now.
I can hear you, Mayor.
Okay.
Can't hear anybody else.
I heard Anne, Anne got cut off in the middle of what she was saying.
Oh, did you hear me at all?
Yes, we heard you.
Okay.
And then I heard Anne say rock star and immediately audio went.
I just was thanking all city departments for their communication, but particularly police and fire. Because they are the most public-facing entities in our city, and they already have set a precedent with their social media precedent, presence. And so I think people easily look to them, and I've appreciated the sharing of information that they have provided.
And the rock star was Darby, because she does a great job with that.
And as Gary is the emergency manager for the city, that's why he's been putting out some of the releases as well, so. We brought that up, anything else for Gary, any other questions? And I'll try and go through, I only see like five pictures, so if there's anyone else, just say it audio-wise. If not, we'll move on. Okay?
All right, Mayor, now we have Kevin Gardis to speak to the public works updates.
Good evening, everyone. The first thing I wanted to mention was, we've been spending a fair bit of time this last week. Working through the governor's order on stay home, stay healthy, particularly as it pertains to construction and construction activities. The governor put out some clarification last week that essentially shut down almost all construction activity in Pullman. Because it deemed it non-essential, that would be all commercial residential type work. There are a few exceptions, there's a handful of projects that are still moving forward in town, one of those is our City Hall project. Global Animal Health Phase Two at WSU and the CAC project. Because the governor's clarification allows for low-income housing projects to move forward. And, and the airport as well, yep. And emergency projects are allowed to proceed too, so we deal with those on a case-by-case basis. I will say that a number of states that have implemented the, this kind of strict stay-home order. As far as I know, there's only two states that have really clamped down on construction, and that is Washington and New York. California had a similar order, but they allowed all construction to continue as essential. Current projects and bid climate. I just wanted Council to know and the citizens that we are still working through some projects, we. Awarded the sidewalks twenty twenty project here recently. We've got three projects out to bid right now, the transit building, electrical upgrades project, airport sanitary sewer extension. Both of those have grant monies associated with them, and the city playfield upgrades, which is bond funding. So one of the things that we are doing, our next bid opening is next Tuesday for the. Airport sanitary sewer extension, since City Hall is closed, we're actually going to meet the bidders. Bid opening is at ten AM in the morning, so we're going to meet them at the southwest door of City Hall at nine forty-five, and we'll take any bids that. We get, we'll open them and, and then announce the results to the, to the bidders. And we sometimes will hold pre-bid meetings in person, you know, where the contractors come in and they can ask questions, but. Canceling that for the time being on all of our projects until the order is lifted. And we've got a couple other projects that are close to going out to bid Lawson Gardens, Garden House, which is a bond project. And arterial streets resurfacing twenty twenty, which has federal grant funding, and that's. The Pioneer Hill resurfacing project on spring, Crestview and Harvest. And it'll be interesting to see if there are any trends in construction. construction pricing with these projects that'll come in within the next thirty to sixty days. The next topic is future development climate. And I just wanted to mention that we're still open for business. We do business by email and phone. And we also occasionally will do an appointment, but those seem to have dropped back quite a bit. We still see interest from developers on their projects, the ones that were in the pipelines. So the good news is these things are still moving forward, the projects. If, if that, you know, it's unsure what that'll hold over time, but at least at the moment that looks positive. Transit activities, ridership. This past week, which is the week after spring break, ridership was down about ninety percent on average for the week. Dial a ride is down about eighty percent. So transit has started in conjunction with WSU and conversations with WSU started to reevaluate the routes and reduce service. So as of tomorrow, we'll have about a thirty-four percent reduction in hours on our route. For utility activities, utility activities obviously are a central function. So we have our M and O staff continuing to, to take care of the water system, the sanitary sewer system, storm drain system, as well as our wastewater treatment plant. Some of the activities that are going on, we have to take monthly and quarterly water samples. There's just a lot of routine things we have to do that comply with state requirements on our water system. Sewer cleaning to prevent backups, water main break, street sweeping, those sorts of things. Remote work assignments. We've gotten as many people home, I think, as, as we practically can to be able to work from home practically. And I would like to thank IT. They've been extremely helpful for getting folks set up with laptops. And in one instance, one of our engineering techs needed to work at home because of some special circumstances and we actually took his computer home because he does a lot of complicated things with AutoCAD that just aren't available to use on a surface. So we've tried to think outside the box and get as many of our folks home as we can and be able to work at home. We've identified a few key staff people. So Clayton Forsman and I are still coming in. We work at separate ends of the building. Kara Haley is working at home and she's kind of the backup for both of us should we have to be away from work for a little while. And we're doing the same thing with building inspectors. We've got one building inspector doing plan review at home. He's also a backup and he's been doing that for a week. Staff safety and staffing levels. Probably the more interesting part of this for us is out at M and O. We spent quite a bit of time, probably two weeks ago, talking about continuity of operations and how we prevent the entire crew from getting, having to go home and quarantine if one person gets sick. So what we did was we split up our M and O team into four separate subgroups. We work split shifts, so two work during the days and two work at night. There's no overlap between the two shifts and they use separate break rooms. So those are just some of the things that we've done to, to try to minimize the spread. Also, we, as has been mentioned earlier by others, we do pretty intensive enhanced cleaning between shifts as well. The wastewater treatment plant has split up into two teams. There's only one day when everybody's at the plant now during the week and they have separate break rooms and have separate activities when they're there. ERD is also split up into two teams and those are a split shift and a night shift. And I was talking to Chris Arvest today and he thought it was working really well, that his, his staff was really being proactive and being really careful with cleaning and social distancing and all of that. So that's it for Public Works and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Sorenson has his hand up.
Yeah, Kevin, I'd like to go back to the start of this slide here where you have the governor's order on construction activities. And I think it would be really helpful to all of our construction people in Pullman if they kind of knew how this was all working in regards to what the process is, if someone's working and they shouldn't be, and then if they keep working and then what happens? Can you kind of go through the process for me?
Sure. The way we've set it up, and this is a conversation that Chief Jenkins and I had last week. Building protective inspection staff kind of take the lead. So if we we drive around and we see a construct, work on a construction site going on, we'll stop by and we'll talk to the contractor. We'll find out about the project. More than likely, it'll probably be nonessential. We'll let them know what the governor's order is. So basically education. And, and we've had to do that a couple of times in the last few days. And typically people, once we talk to them, they get the message and they, they leave. And that's pretty much the end of it. If, if we had a situation where somebody just was dead set on continuing to work, then we ask a police officer to go out and explain the governor's order to them. So you know, we, we take the education upfront. If enforcement's needed, then the police department would step in. We've also been pretty proactive in sending out a lot of emails. And whenever we talk to contractors on the phone, we explain what the governor's order means. It's taken a little while because, you know, when the governor first put the order out, it was a little unclear what construction was essential and what wasn't. But by, I think, last Tuesday or Wednesday, the clarification that came out made it really clear what was essential and it basically isn't much. So right now, if we get a call, if it goes directly to the police department, then they go out usually and they just let us know what they find. But if we find it, we go out and talk to them.
Okay, I, I think that's really good. You know, I, I've had a number of contractors that I know in town who are, you know, voluntarily right away stopped our activities. And then we have a few stragglers that are kind of still moving on. And my whole point of this is we need to make sure that the playing field is level and we're not letting some people work when others are not. And I want to make sure that we do stay on top of that. And as you know, I have let you know about a few and, and they've complied for the most part with everything. And I think that's great. But I just want to make sure that, you know, just because we've counseled them and educated them, that if they continue to violate the governor's order, that we take it to the next level. And what that next level is, I don't know exactly. I, I know that there's some website and email reporting that came out that would go to the state. And I don't know if that's something that we would pull in here, like somebody from Department of Labor and Industries or anything like that. Or if we actually have to be, for lack of a better term, the policing of this.
Yeah, I think at this point is from what I know, we're, we're the ones that have to, to stay on top of this here in Pullman. I know there was something that came out today and Chief Jenkins may know more about it as far as reporting these things. And I heard something on the radio on the way home about, you know, if people don't comply and it goes to a couple of levels, the Attorney General's office may get involved at some point. So I think, you know, obviously we're trying to get voluntary cooperation, but at some point we ratchet things up and Gary, you might want to chime in, but I think that if you continue to operate, the police department can issue a citation that is a fine of like $500.
Yeah, Gary, could you expand on that a little bit for me?
Yeah, so the, the mayor's, I'm sorry, the governor's address that was the end of last week. He was there with Attorney General Ferguson and announcing the, the new website that they have available for the reporting of businesses that are not in compliance with the proclamation and names specifically construction. And the governor indicated that they would bring to bear state resources to that, such as revoking licenses and permits and those types of things for those that are in a violation. So I think it is something that we would work with the governor's office on. But as Kevin said, the enforcement is, is pretty much up to us. So if we got to a point where someone was, was not abiding by the proclamation after some warnings and it's clear that they were aware of what the requirements are and the provisions are, then we would ride the ticket and, and prosecute criminally.
Okay, that's great. You know, there's, there's nobody more than me that wants to see construction and everything continue to go. But the reason that we have the stay at home, stay healthy proclamation is so that we can get through this thing and then get back to it. And, you know, I just want us to be treating everyone on the same level. And that's my whole point of this.
Understood.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. I didn't see who, who it was. I just saw.
Thank you. I accidentally muted myself again. But we're back. Kevin, if, if you could clarify this, this conversation about construction activities, that does not include like a homeowner who wants to do, wants to brave the weather and do some basic spring maintenance on their home, does it? It does not cover that. Somebody wants to repair their fence or put in a new back door or something, they can still go ahead and do that?
That's correct. Anything that wouldn't require a permit or inspection, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Mayor? Kevin, I was wondering if you might want to put in a plug for wastewater treatment with all the talk about toilet paper shortages and about alternative things going down the toilet and what that does to our system?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Records. It's a battle we fight all the time at the wastewater treatment plant with our lift stations primarily, which are the pump stations where the raw sewage comes in and we have to lift it up into the wastewater treatment plant because of the elevation difference. And there's a lot of these wipes now that are supposedly biodegradable. And there's been a lot of reports in newspapers and magazines about how they're really not good for the sanitary sewer system. They essentially clog our pumps. We have a pretty big lift station at the south end of the wastewater treatment plant. And we've got, luckily, we have three pumps in it, but there's always one of them that gets plugged up with those wipes. And and I know that people are, when they run out of toilet paper, they're potentially going to use anything they can find. But that stuff has to be disposed of in the trash, not down the toilet or into the sanitary sewer system.
Yeah, and I know that, you know, in, in our Western kind of Western society, it's not necessarily considered sanitary to be throwing that away, but that is the appropriate place to put it is in the trash. Only toilet paper and your own waste goes in the toilet. Everything else needs to go in the trash.
Eileen?
Yeah, if we think of it in terms of we dispose of disposable diapers in the trash and that is the place for that. So, and I saw a poster the other day that said, no wipes in the pipes.
Yeah, there's a lot of public education campaigns around this issue.
Any other questions of Kevin or comments? If not, we'll continue on.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got Finance Department update next with Mike Urban.
Me, it's my turn. Thank you and good evening, Council. Just a couple of quick little housekeeping items. As usual, I like it when you interrupt me. Unfortunately, I can't see all of you, but I can see the names. So if you raise your hand electronically, like Councilmember Sorenson, Councilmember Parks have done, I will stop and interrupt. I'm not stopping in time. Would you wave him frantically in front of you and Adam will stop me? And I'll just jump right in. So if I keep looking to the side here, that's because I'm running the PowerPoint tonight and that's where it exists. So I'm just refreshing myself where I'm at. So finance update, before I get into the department activities, I want to talk to you about the cash flow and the items that are going around with that. So the expenditures continue to remain curtailed around the city. The department heads have been absolutely fantastic about keeping on top of the nonessential, non-emergent type items to the point where if invoices coming in that was accrued before this all happened, they're calling me like, hey, when you see this mic, don't, don't panic. This is something that happened before you, I mean, I talked to you. So it's, it's okay to pay it if the money's okay. So we've, they've been really great about that. Quick sales tax update. This is the part for everybody out there viewing us on YouTube and council's heard me do a thousand times, but I'm going to do it again. Our sales tax collection is always two months lagging the actual activity. So when the month ends today, they have, the vendors have till the end of the next month to submit it to the state and then they turn around and submit it to us in the following month. So we won't know March's activities really until the end of May and how this affects us. But we did receive today our January numbers. And they were, I was pleasantly surprised. We were up seven point three seven percent over the same period last year. So we're, we're slightly up over last year for the first three months, a total of one point four three percent. So the economy was humming along at a pretty good pace until whatever we're going through is what we're going through right now. So we got some guidance over the last twenty-four hours from the Whitman County Treasurer regarding property taxes. Treasurer Nelson has come out and said that property taxes are still due, still due by the end of the month. There is some relief is the word that was used in the press. If you go to the Whitman County site and you think you might qualify, there's a couple options there where you can stagger your tax payments, but they are still due. So wanted to let council know that and the community know that. Because that's where a lot of our funding comes from. So to make the bond payments in June, to do all the, keep the city up and running even, you know, on the limited basis that we are, it's very important that we receive those dollars. There was a MRSC webinar last Thursday that I was really excited to get about because it was marked as the fiscal, fiscal part of the coronavirus. And really it was kind of a recap of what I presented to you already on the seventeenth, you know, things that will be affected by this. The admissions tax, what to do looking ahead. So I sat through it with several of our staffers and we just really started to work on what our plan would look like once we know what the outlook is. And so I wanted to work into the outlook there. So the economic impact of this has been sudden and intense. I, I think the recovery will be very similar. I know we're talking about jobs. I know we're talking about small businesses. I know there's different things that Jen Hackman's been working on through the state, through the feds. I would love to be able to do something from the city. We just don't have the budget for it to be able to support and do things for our local businesses other than support them by local. As that changes, as other things become available, that if the city is the grant, the grant recipient where we can send stuff out, we will jump in with both feet. Several stimulus packages have been out there and discussed. We're still waiting to see what those look like in practice.
Mike?
Yes?
Hey, can I jump in here? So I know that my, my hometown of, of Centralia, I just pulled this, this thing up. They had a special appropriations fund that they, it wasn't a lot of money, but it was, it was $18,000 that they were using for PPE for first responders and then a few other things for like seniors. So that's, I was, I was just curious if we had any of those, those kind of, like a special appropriations funds in our city at this point?
To be used for PPE first responders?
Well, not necessarily. That's just where, that's just what they did it for and that's what it came out of. So, so I don't know if, if you would call that discretionary money or, or, or something else, but do we have? Do we have any, any kind of allocated budget that we can? You know, we, we would be able to tap into if we wanted to on, on city, on like a city level, try to stimulate some of the business. You know, to jumpstart when all this was said and done.
Sure. We, we don't have. Sure, we don't have a designated fund set to allocate allocated set for those types of things. There's dollars in the general fund where we could reallocate from other departments. But if you're looking to do something to jumpstart business, there is dollars in the Civic Improvement Fund that have not been spent and have been accumulating. So those could be used for like marketing campaigns or, you know, if there's some things that short of handing the dollars because those came through lodging tax. So they come with certain restrictions.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Good question. So really, to finish my economic outlook, I just I'll reiterate what I said, the recovery can't start now. There's a turning point coming, and that will initiates all this economic activity that we're looking for. So we can really start forecasting and planning what, you know, how deep did it go or how shallow, how long? And then what it's going to take to recover from this. Councilmember Sorensen, I see your hand up.
Yeah, sorry, I had to step out for one second. I don't know. Did you mention anything with this economic outlook about the possibility of the SWIDA having funding for businesses?
I haven't yet. I know that that's another slide coming up that Adam's going to touch on, and I know that there's.
That's fine.
A better time for that. And I know you're up on that since you're the board, so I'm going to defer to you. And if you'd like to wait, if not, we can take this now.
We can wait.
Okay, it's coming. I think it's a slide after next, but we'll we'll see how much I remember here. All right. Wanted to also touch base on the utilities. Right now, we continue operating the water utility. We're not doing red tags. We're not doing shut offs. We're working through things. We're starting to see some of the checkouts where students are leaving, as Gary had mentioned earlier, that we usually see in middle, end of May. They're happening now. So a lot of services being shut off by the utility user. We also see a lot of utilities that are going out there on timely payments. So really want to temper Council that we're we're seeing. We're preparing for some significant activity on unpaid accounts. So we're going to try to collect on those within a certain set of parameters, obviously guided by Council. Try to work with people to get their accounts paid off. But we want people to keep washing their hands and as they're leaving, you know, we're just trying to keep our hands on top of everything else in the utility department. Okay. So operationally for my department right now, you know, staff safety, where we can work remotely, reiterating a lot of things that everybody else said, we're doing that. IT did an amazing job getting my staff deployed, so everybody can work remotely if they want to. We're being very careful about the things that we're taking out of the office as far as sensitive material and those types of items. So with finance and HR, we're keeping payroll flowing, accounts payable, all the essential functions. We're working hard to understand the changing rules with all the employment laws and everything else that's going on. So if anything is affected, any of our staff is affected, they have a resource that they can call that they've seen and they know, and we can help guide them through that. The clerk has been familiarizing herself with the new public records items and the OPMA items under these emergency measures. We're not curtailing our public records. We're treating those as business as usual, even though the emergency measures exist because the staff is here. We want to take care of those under, you know, keep them going. We don't. We don't want anything to drop through the cracks. IT has been busy, busy, busy with all of these remote deployments. They're doing servicing, not just in their normal parameters, but also some remote servicing issues. I know a couple of my staffers had a couple of items they worked right through. So the the system is out there. It's expanding. It's it's strained, but it's not to a point that's breaking. They're just they're adapting like crazy. They've been working long, odd hours, and their availability has been great. Rob's got the YouTube going today for the second time and really kind of fine tune that and even being able to bring you the opportunity to meet like this. So they're they're keeping it together. And because of it, we've been doing a lot more of these online meetings. And I was thinking about it as I was writing my notes. I've tried to decide that when things return to normal, I don't know if I can go back to face to face. This has been great where I can go from working in my office or working at home, zip into meetings, zip back and not have the travel time or any of that. So IT's IT's been great for us and the whole department's been working really hard under the circumstances, lots of long hours.
Mike?
Yes?
This is Dan. I have a question back on HR with some of the 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 new employment law changes. And I just wanted to get I think we've talked about this, but just a clarification on there. There are some parts of the the stimulus package, the the response acts that have financial assistance to businesses with less than 500 employees. And I just want to just that doesn't apply to municipalities, does it?
That is correct.
So so businesses with less than 500 employees might get some financial assistance to cover some of those costs of those employee leave provisions. But us as a city wouldn't be getting that same kind of financial assistance.
No, and it's kind of a pay it upfront, get reimbursed in the back. The way that it's set up is when these businesses of 500 or less, they pay out their staff. And then when they do their federal tax return after the year, that's where the deduction comes. So since the city doesn't produce a federal tax return, we're certainly not open to any of that. And it does specifically in the language exclude municipalities.
And Dan, there was a measure that the U.S. Conference of Mayors pushed through to the legislature that did not happen. And that was to try and take care of municipalities with the shortages that we're going to have.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thanks. Good question. All right. If there's I'm available for questions offline too, and you know, we're for, you know, on behalf of the entire city. Maybe we're not the first responders and out of the utilities, but they're essential staff. They're working every day. We're flexing schedules. We're keeping the payroll rolling and I just a lot of credit to my folks. I appreciate each and every one of them. So with that, I'll give you the next slide.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's important to really let everybody know that department heads, department heads especially have been really working very diligently. I'm pretty sure everyone's working seven days a week at this point, and the hours they're putting in are immense. So I really am appreciative of of the nimbleness that everyone's found to really take care of of all the stuff that's flying at them. And now we're using a internal instant messaging system and the video chats. I mean, this it's it's just a lot for everyone to try and and have all this data that's flying at them, even if it's just a, hey, I need to talk to you for two minutes, where it could have been a little more informal of walking into the office. Now it's a little more structured, and I think if if they're like me at all, it just feels like you're kind of always on. So I appreciate everyone doing that. It'll be a when we get through this, a well deserved vacation for a lot of people. The next slide, I want to just give some additional updates on on some of the other departments. The library's really been focusing on pushing their digital collection. You know, they're they're at limited staff right now, and they're working internally to do some more online storytelling and following the lead of the mayor who who really kickstarted that by doing four or five, and I think others are planned, episodes on the city's YouTube channel. So that'll be that'll be nice for everyone to check that out. Parks and Facilities, they've gone around. They've locked up the bathroom facilities and cordoned off the playground equipment. You'll see a another forthcoming YouTube video from one of our council members who's going to really help tell us about how we do have a lot of green space and open space that's still available. If it's safe and you're practicing good social distancing, that's that's still a resource that we have. And appreciate Councilmember McCall for putting in the the work on that. Recreation Department, they're still working on on packing up and preparing for their move to vacate the school district's Pioneer Center. They're also working on preparing for their their summer brochure, although at this point that may just be aspirational that they're they're putting the effort into that. City Hall still coming along. There's a lot of progress there. I just got a note from from Kevin that said that they're about to start drywall on the the City Hall building. So there's there's a lot of progress that's happening there. It's still a project that's allowed to continue on. So we're happy to see that that's that's taking place. And I'm sure that our general contractor is is very aware of the fact that there's probably a workforce who's looking for projects to do, and that might be the the one for them to keep keep the ball rolling and stay employed right now. Economic Development's another one where Jennifer Hackman's been extremely busy. She just stood up a MailChimp account so that the city can now kind of take messaging and into their own hands. And and we've been working really well with the Downtown Association, with SWIDA, with Small Business Association, of course, with the Chamber. But it'll be nice to be able to send our own notes and work with the business community because we we're in the unique position of of representing all of the businesses. And we're acutely aware of that and want to make sure that we're kind of that that neutral party who everyone can come to and get the resources. As Councilmember Sorensen had pointed out, the Department of the the Governor has passed through funds that'll go through the Department of Commerce that will go through SWIDA and then to businesses. And I know they've been kind of taking the lead, but we've been pointing businesses in in their direction. Councilmember, did you want to add anything on on SWIDA?
Yeah, there I raised my hand. How about that? Yeah, I just want to, you know, the the program's new. They're they're a little bit not quite knowing exactly how it's going to work. It's a little bit overwhelming at the moment. But yeah, there's going to be some I don't know if I should call it grant money or not, money that probably won't have to be paid back. It won't be loans or things like that that will be dispersed to businesses. There are some certain guidelines for that, and I'm sure that that's going to continue to come out to people. I think that we really want to make sure that we get that information distributed to all the businesses in Pullman. I think we really need to use Jennifer Hackman, our economic development person, as much as possible as the lead on this for the city. We certainly want all of this information to be disseminated to all the businesses in Pullman, just not certain ones here and there and that type of thing. And so I would just like to really, really push that, you know, this be one of the things that Jennifer really try to work on. You know, there's going to be an awful lot of small businesses in Pullman. Well, they're already hurting. But anything we can do to help them and help guide them with this type of thing, I'm sure that there's going to be limited funds and that type of thing. But I would like to push Jennifer to be kind of the contact person for the city of Pullman when it comes to working with SWIDA on this.
Thank you, Councilmember. Her her information has been pushed out on the city's website. Her direct phone number also is 509-338-3168. That's 509-338-3168. If there's any businesses that need to get ahold of her, she's definitely been our point person on that. And she's available to work with the businesses. Like you said, there's been a influx of people calling and reaching out to SWIDA. So I'm sure it's like drinking through a fire hose right now, and they're they're doing a great job. So on the the slide that's in front of you now, you can see that again, through the city's website, we've got the the sign up page to be a part of the the city's MailChimp account for businesses in particular. So please, if you're a business owner, go ahead to the city's website, go to the economic development page, and there's the COVID-19 business resources on there. Sign up. We need to get as many subscribers as we can. We'd encourage all businesses to participate and do that. The Chamber, of course, has also been sending out regular emails, as has the Downtown Pullman Association and SWIDA too. I've seen several emails from them, including their they're conducting an economic survey right now to try and help measure what's what the impact is and what's going on with our our small businesses in particular.
And the Chamber is sending out emails twice a day now, just giving updates.
Absolutely.
Hey, Glenn, that's all great, as long as they're getting it to more businesses than just the Chamber members. I think that's that's super important. I think they ask for anybody who would like to get it. They they're asking for their emails, so they give all that information out. That's good.
So that's what I have for economic development right now on the the next slide. Just some some sort of parting parting thoughts here. We continue to monitor the the health and welfare of the community and our staff especially. I very much that's that's been weighing on my mind is what can we do to make sure that our our employees are staying safe? And I think we've rapidly implemented quite a few things that are really doing a good job of keeping them protected. We're keeping careful eye on the economic conditions of the the city, watching for new proclamations. We tune into the the governor's speeches on a on a regular basis because we know that there's going to be oftentimes new deadlines, new extensions or or rules changes that we need to be aware of. And and of course, we're also looking for opportunities for for assistance at the federal and state level. We we've tried to be really careful about what we're implementing. So for Councilmember Records question, e- even though we we know that we're not going to be reimbursed, we've done, I think, a really good job of informing the employees of the additional leave bank that's available to them and the the rules with which they would access that. And we've got some other stipulations for other leave types that they can take advantage of under certain circumstances. So we're trying to be very aware of the fact that we've got people who aren't working right now. And and we're doing our best to make sure if there is something they can be working on that they are. But we're also trying to be fiscally responsible as best we can because there's still a lot of unknowns. It'll it'll be interesting to see what happens with the sales tax for the next the next meeting that we have where Mike can present that information. And hopefully, we are able to keep going with the collection of the property taxes. But that's a balance too, where where our families are being impacted, and it's not always easy for them to continue to make those payments. So there there may be a dip there just from people's ability to 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 make those payments, and we're acutely aware of that. We really appreciate the Council's help. We we ask for your continued support to talk to your constituents, talk to the residents about what's what's happening, pushing them to the resources that the city's trying to get out there. If you're aware of the state and federal resources, please continue to inform them, inform them of those. We'll we'll continue to try and do our best to make YouTube videos and inform that way. It's obviously a new world for some of us who who don't have a background in doing that. But I I find that if you apply a daughter to your lap, it seems to be a pretty good way to get through it. And and she she enjoyed doing that certainly. So I'm happy to keep my keep informing my kids about what's going on as best I can and and get their help to kind of get the word out. So with that, I think we're at a good point. If there's any questions, and I'd also add that we've had about 50 viewers the whole time. So I think that's a pretty pretty solid too.
Adam Eileen has a question.
Yes, Councilmember. You're you're muted, Eileen. Hold on, I'll unmute you. See if it'll work. Mike, can you unmute her? It's not working for me.
I think that got it.
There we go.
Hey, when we're talking about activities that that are going forward, I wanted to put in a word for the Council on Aging Senior Meal Program is definitely still going forward. They have prepared lunches available on Tuesdays and Fridays. That's a kind of a coordinated program between our Pullman Senior Center and the Council on Aging. If you know of a senior who would like a meal, if you know of a person who needs meals, would like a meal, please have them call the Pullman Senior Center, 509-338-3307. And they do sort of need a heads up and a reservation. Meals are being picked up in the parking area behind or in front of the police station. Meals are being delivered as needed to those who who can't get out. It's an amazing program. It is going forward full blast. The women that run that program are Director Monica and our our people from Council on Aging, Sonia and Lynn. I went down to help first thing this morning, and the dishwasher had blown up. They packed everything up. They took it to Colfax. They got back to Pullman with prepared meals by 11:30, right on time, while I I helped out with the with the mess that was left in the kitchen. So the kitchen has been thoroughly swamped out. While I, I helped out uh, with the, with the mess that was left in the kitchen. So the kitchen has been thoroughly swamped out. But if you need a meal, please, please call, make that, make that reservation, 509-338-3307. At a time when our seniors may be especially vulnerable, excellent nutrition is always a, is a good reinforcement. So please call that number and get a meal or get a meal for someone who you know need. Thank you.
I, I, I think they had uh, almost a hundred meals that went out today. So I, I heard, yeah, today. So that was uh, really impressive numbers to hear.
It was an amazing effort.
Any other questions?
Adam Pat has her hand up.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't put a shout out to um, not only IT, because they've been fabulous in getting us all set up with this, but also uh, in regard to Pullman Regional Hospital and everything that they've been doing. And as Troy indicated, um, we have eight confirmed cases of COVID-19, none of whom are hospitalized. So that obviously is a good thing. But updates are, are um, published daily by Scott Adams at the hospital, indicating everything that the hospital is doing to, at this point, just be prepared for whatever is going on. So I think a shout out needs to go out to all our healthcare professionals in that regard. So thank you, all of you that are contributing to that and contributing to what um, I think Pullman is just doing a fabulous job. So thank you, everybody involved in that. I appreciate it.
One of the nice things, well, I got a call from the hospital last week and they said, can we get any one of your signs? So we can put a sign up to talk about uh, our testing in the back of the uh, hospital. And uh, I contacted Gary Jenkins, our police chief, and I think within an hour, we had the mobile sign up there by the hospital to give information. They were so appreciative of the fact that there's another example of all of us just working together, trying to help out.
I think Dan Records has a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to uh, remind everyone, uh, if you, if you're not aware that several of our restaurants uh, in Pullman um, are still offering delivery and pickup options. There's, some of that information is available at, at Pullman Moscow Daily News. And uh, Pullman Radio News has some, and there's a couple of other websites that have popped up uh, to pull together those resources. So you can find a list of businesses that are, that are open and delivering. Um, a lot of, a lot of our restaurants have pulled it together in, in a short timeframe to offer delivery services where they weren't previously. Um, I know I've taken advantage of that, tried to do that a couple of times each week to keep our, keep supporting our local businesses. Um, and I also wanted to just remind folks that may be viewing right now, if you're not already subscribed to the Pullman's uh, City of Pullman YouTube channel, please subscribe. Uh, we do have uh, some requirements that we get a certain number of subscribers to keep offering the uh, the YouTube Live. Uh, and so, so thank you for all those that have subscribed. And if you haven't already, please subscribe.
Good messages, Dan. Any other comments before we conclude? Uh, yes, I see, uh, Mike Urban?
Yeah, just a quick comment and uh, you know, I think this is the first ever uh, city council meeting that's been done remotely. So thank you all for your participation, but I know that Wayne Brannick and I wanna continue to make it better. So we'd be happy to hear any um, comments, criticisms, whatever you wanna send our way via email. Uh, we'll take it in the spirit in which is given and continue to make this better for you. So thank you, council, and thank you, the department heads that turned in.
Yeah, Glenn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, I just, I wanted, we, we kind of got past the recreation pretty fast, but um, the, I know the weather hasn't cooperated the last uh, three or four days, but traditionally, the baseball fields are done in, you know, mid-April, um, sometimes till late April before that gets done. And I know I had talked to Adam and and um, expressed that because we've got kids out of school, because they can't be on the play equipment, um, a number of other things that they can't normally do, but, but they can have open space as long as that, that distancing is happening. Uh, it would be wise to reprioritize some of our things. And very quickly, they, they got out there and it, as of last weekend, they had, they had gone and they, they drug all of the fields and they were um, they were all ready for, for people to um, on their own, just throw a ball around, uh, have some fun. I, I think that was really important to um, to get out of their ordinary schedule and, and do that just because it was um, the right time for, for all of the, the kiddos that are out.
Yeah, thank you for that comment. Uh, I'll, I'll make sure to pass that along to Alan and his team too. I think that was uh, um, excellent timing that they were able to get out there.
Any other uh, closing comments?
Got uh, four more images and then we'll, we'll wrap it up here. So the, the last four images, again, good reminders, the stay home, stay healthy. Uh, as Councilmember Sorenson had pointed out, that's the, the terminology we're, we're using and sticking to it. Um, we're, we're making sure that everyone's continuing to wash their hands and be uh, as, as diligent as they can to, to follow the, whatever song they're, they're choosing to use. Uh, we've got versions of Baby Shark in My House that'll drive me up the wall and um, uh, Happy Birthday, three or four times is always a good one too. So lots of options there for, for anyone who's playing at home. Uh, after that, we making sure that everyone is uh, covering up their, their mouths and, and making sure they're not sneezing and, and getting that uh, the droplets on, on other people. That's one of the really critical things that we're trying to be mindful of. So that um, that, that's what causes the, the ability for this to spread is that droplet. So thus the, the six feet at least to, to protect yourselves. And, and last uh, a, a call out to continue, please to support your local businesses. Not everyone can be open, but it's, it's been incredible to see uh, the restaurants, their flexibility to um, allow for online ordering, curbside pickup, um, some of the other businesses that have gone to um, online retail. It's, it's incredible. It must be very stressful and, and extremely costly for them to to pivot with the, the, the rapid manner that they've done so. But um, please continue to watch for resources and, and support the local businesses as best we can. Councilmember, right?
Yeah.
Um, just real quick, uh, in regard to the local businesses. Um, I think we need to recognize a couple of them who have uh, donated meals to people. I know this has been something that started last week and another one happened today where people don't have to pay anything for the meals. They just show up, no questions asked, and all these businesses are asking for donations. So that's an unbelievable thing that people are doing. And I know all of the other businesses will be stepping up to do that as well.
And Dismore's delivering groceries free of charge. And normally they used to have a uh, a, a delivery charge, but they're actually trying to do it free of charge. It's Dismore's. So like you said, there's just so many people that are stepping up right now. We appreciate it. Uh, a couple of closing comments. Uh, Attorney General Bob Ferguson has a website set up, actually his regular one for complaints. If you think that you have uh, been a victim of a scam and view of the COVID-19 or price gouging, there is a place for you to complain uh, with the state and they will respond back to you. There's also the US Attorney General's Office that's looking into uh, internet scams as far as COVID-19 is concerned. So there's a couple of resources there that you uh, could use. I have received a call today from Senator Patty Murray. And she was asking how we were doing here in her cougar hometown. And I get, had a chance to report back and talk about what the hospital's been up to and fact that we still could use some more PPEs, the, the uh, a personal protection equipment. Uh, we were getting at least uh, an adequate number of tests in now for this area that had been slow. Uh, also on the line today with a couple of meetings with Association of Washington Cities. Uh, normally in June, we have our annual meeting, but they're gonna have to make a decision in two weeks whether that's even gonna be handled. And one of the things that comes up is that all the cities in this state have been hit tremendously, just like the businesses have. And there may not be money for travel to go to a, an annual meeting. And as a consequence, uh, we may not have it. So uh, they're gonna make that decision in a couple of weeks. There's also another White House briefing that we get with the Intergovernmental Affairs. And that's when we hear back from uh, public health. We hear from Homeland Security. We hear from all different regions about what uh, may be coming our way as far as help. And uh, any kind of thing like that, we can help with our community. Uh, one thing that if you read the planning newsletter, you'll see that Pete Dickinson announced that he's going to retire. And his, his last day will be, I think, June 26th. Pete's been with the city for a wonderful amount of time, fantastic service he's given to this community. Uh, and so we wanna make sure that we wish Pete the best and we'll do that when it gets closer to that June number. If with that, uh, seeing nothing else, we'll just conclude this meeting. Thank you again. And there's been a number of different comments from people tonight. We really wanna thank IT. It's really stepped up to help us so tremendously with being able to conduct this uh, and, and first of all, having a bid for Ring Central because Ring Central has worked out so well for this community and for all our phone systems and our communications. And I think uh, I see Rob Larson, who's in, in charge of this tonight. So Rob, thank you very much for all the work that you've been doing on this. With that, we can
Thank you, Rob.
We conclude our Pullman City Council meeting for this, this Tuesday evening. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.